Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, in this little liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Ram Kassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Approval minutes.
Tonight, we have the minutes from the February 6, 2018 meeting.
So moved. Resolution positive by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Correspondents?
No correspondence this evening.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address the council, please step forward. You have four minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Darren Cross. I'm a lifelong city resident. I live in the second ward. I'm also a grateful city employee. I started my job eighteen years ago, January. I'm here tonight to talk about the Middletown Little League. I've coached my eight-year-old son, his son's baseball team, for the last three years, and I joined the board two years ago. My title on the Little League Board is liaison between the city and our sponsors. We are proud to say that this year, we have an amazing turnout of sponsors. Currently, we are at thirty, with a few more still interested. That will give us enough sponsors for all of our regular season teams, as well as our All-Star and our fall ball teams. Very exciting news for us. I want to take a minute and thank the city for their support in what we are doing at Watts Park. Last year, we did fundraisers such as gift wrapping, coin drops, cheesecake sales, enough to raise money to purchase a new material for the playing surface on Lybolt Field. This dirt will allow a better playing surface and will drain better, hopefully giving us less rainout nights. I also want to say thank you to the city for the new bleachers. We have three sets of new bleachers that were delivered to the park. That's also very exciting for us. And I want to definitely say thank you to Chris Brinkerhoff, her entire staff in the office, John Bianchi and his entire crew. They've gone above and beyond to make the park the best playing facility for the children and the parents. Also, I would like to say thank you to a few of our new sponsors that came on board with us this year. We have the Kiwanis, the Rotary, the YMCA, PBA, NeighborX Pharmacy, Mid-City Transit. I've also been in touch with Lieutenant Toland, and I just spoke to Chief Imanchu about the police department working with us and putting police there on foot patrol during game nights, which is very exciting to me because I want our children to not be afraid of the police. I want our children to be excited to see the police. And we have a lot of positive things happening this year. We plan a night of baseball where the kids can play with the police. We're trying to work that out. I talked to Officer Beebe. And a home run derby for the coaches and the parents. I would also like to give a special thanks to Jerry Kleiner and Andrew Green. I attended my constituents' meeting for my award, and my voice was heard. And also, a special thanks to Andrew Green. He saved us last week. We had some graphic design issues, and he was a lifesaver. I dropped some letters to City Hall last week to all the council members, council president, and Mayor DiStefano, inviting you guys to join us on April 7th for our opening day parade and ceremonies. We'll be kicking off at ten a.m. at Presidential Park, going up Sunset, down Watkins, to Watts Park. I hope you all can attend. We'll have bounce houses and activities for -- and some of our sponsors will have booths and give information about their businesses. And I'll end with this. Our goal in the Middletown Little League is to teach our children the game, but more importantly, to teach them core values and to all grow up to be respectful, productive members of society, graduate high school, and hopefully go to college. Thank you again for your time and all your support, and we hope to see you on April 7th, and please be safe during the storm. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor DiStefano, President Rodriguez, members of the common council. Kevin Gomez, a member of the school board for the large city school district of Middletown. And as you know, I'm serving in the capacity of a liaison along with my colleagues, Vince Crescendo and Avia Bishop-Williams, who also serve on the board with us. This is a very busy time for us on the board. We are addressing a lot of important subjects that are crucial for our children's welfare, security, and future. This time, as you know, the school board is moving forward with the superintendent's search, and we should be addressing the topic of potential candidates in the near future. So that's -- our goal is to -- that within the term of the current school board, that we will finalize the selection of a new superintendent. And at this time, we are working very vigorously with our interim superintendent and addressing the other issues. At this time, also, our school boards move forward, as well with the budget process, to ensure that for the next school year, we have an efficient budget that wisely uses taxpayer money, and of course, keeps us within the tax cap so our property owners could see -- not see an unfair burden, and at the same time, see that our schools are funded efficiently. At the same time, I'm very happy, as a parent, and as the concern of many other parents, our school board has given priority to addressing the issue of school security. As our president, John Perino, stated at the last meeting, that we will do whatever it takes to ensure the safety and security of our students and all who work in our school districts. We have met privately in our executive session, and we will address it publicly, and we're looking at all possible options to see how we could upgrade and ensure that our different campuses are safe, and as well as exploring other means of security for our schools, and also grants, funds that may be available for them. I know that our acting superintendent has met with the different departments of law enforcement that serves our county, and we're looking at different options. And the door is open, and whether it be upgrading security for the building, having armed security through state funds or contracting, different security firms out there, we're looking at all options available, and hopefully, we'll hear good news there, which is my goal, hope and prayer. So our districts have moved forward, and I encourage again all our members of the common council, many who are parents themselves, to enjoy all the upcoming concerts and events in our schools, and also pass the word to our children that they see something, hear something, say something. So we have that climate of trust and stability and academic excellence our children need. And I believe my colleague, Mr. Crescendo, is going to further address. Thank you, Mr. President.
All I have to add, Vince Crescendo, representing the Middletown School Board, all I have to add to about the superintendent's search is that the -- our headhunter has a minimum of thirty applicants, and evidently, they're very high-quality applicants. On March 3rd, I think it was a Tuesday, we're going to teleconference with him. He's going to give us the details, and he's going to narrow that number down to maybe around ten or fifteen. We're going to take a look at it, and we narrow the search down to about five, and those are the people that we'll interview. But that's where -- so it's moving ahead. He was impressed with the quality of the applicants, and we're very, very encouraged by it. And also, I'd like to ask permission. Reverend Ryu is here. We're going to talk about the marches, and I'd like to speak with him together at the podium.
Sure.
Thank you so much. So let me start. We just left a meeting with the Board of Education.
Can I do that first, and then?
Let me just give a quick update.
Sure.
The board is on board with all of this, the central administration, what have you. We're going to send home flyers with the children. They're going to do a robo-call announcing. This is the 24th, the March 24th demonstration. So we'll have the full support of the district, and hopefully, this will get the numbers out. And on March 14th, we're going to have the, I believe it's seventeen minutes, we're going to go out to the field. And thank you so much for allowing the police department to support us and surround the fields and what have you. That's going to be very, very important to the demonstrations and the success.
Mr. Rodriguez, the members of common council, Mayor DiStefano, good evening. My name is Reverend Charles Ryu, pastor of St. Paul's United Methodist Church, just around the corner from the city hall. This is where the Greater Middletown Interference Council's warming station is housed. Each night, we house up to thirty homeless guests who otherwise would not have a roof over their heads or protection from the severe winter weather. This evening, however, I rise to speak to this august body in order to request the common council of City of Middletown, New York, to support and provide leadership in the new national movement to protect students and citizens from gun violence and mass shootings, this time led by the student survivors of the recent, another school mass shooting in Parkland, Florida on Valentine's Day, Ash Wednesday, February 14th. Specifically, I'm requesting the common council to consider the City of Middletown becoming an official sponsor of the March for Our Lives, as it came to be known, right here in Middletown, New York, directing the related departments of the city to work with a growing organizing team for successful, peaceful, and safe march, and the rally that follows. The March for Our Lives is called for, as was mentioned, on Saturday, March 24th, in conjunction and solidarity with the March in Washington, DC, and the concurrent marches organized throughout the country and even abroad. I've already met with Chief John Imanchu, a police department. I believe he is in support of this and is waiting for the direction from the city. I've met with Mayor Joe DiStefano, and he's in full support of it and is open to the possibility of City of Middletown becoming an official sponsor of the march. Though I'm sure this could be done through his executive order, I believe it would be a lot more meaningful if the common council votes to make it so. And given the shortness of the time before the actual march in less than three weeks, I request if at all possible, it would be great if the decision could be made tonight. As the board members have mentioned, I've appeared before the Board of Education on March 1st and received the really strong support for it. On the spot, they've assigned a board liaison to the work on this march, and another board member volunteered to work on this as well. And already, we have had two very productive meetings, and as we just heard from one of the board members, they are doing a lot of things for this. The meeting with the superintendent, Mr. DeMora, was set on Friday, but had to be postponed until Thursday because of the weather. The Greater Middletown Interference Council, where the concern arose first, has blessed this march, and from my very short organizing experience, the list of supporting organizations and the groups will only continue to grow. There is a real concern and passionate interest throughout the wide spectrum of society, here regionally and nationally. Thank God for the young people in our midst that are challenging our national conscience vis-à-vis gun violence and mass shootings. For the first time, it now has a real viable major social, political, and even economic traction in the national and local aspiration. That is our yearning and right to live in peace without fear of any more gun violence and mass shootings, which have marred our national life in increasing frequency and magnitude. And really do something about it, because it could have been me, my child, this school, this city. I pray that the common council of the City of Middletown, New York, would seize the sign of the time and become a leader and integral part of this new movement. Thank you very much, and I'm prepared to answer any questions in detail.
Anyone else would like to address the council?
Hi, I'm Tom Benjamin. Thank you for letting me address the council with my unfortunately repeated request with the problem with my house at Sixth Columbia Avenue. On October 7th, October 2017, I respectfully submitted the attached letter for your attention. I'm writing this letter to follow up on the status of my request, as the flooding issue -- issues are ongoing and the effect quality of my life. These issues need the attention. The authorities and passage of time has not resolved them, but has exasperated them. I appreciate your attention to this matter. Do you want -- I don't think I need to re-read the letter.
She's -- you give it to Karen.
Okay. Unfortunately, it's getting to be a weekly problem now instead of a couple times a year. There you go. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
I hope as we peacefully let Joe speak, that I will not be interrupted and allowed my four minutes of speech. I agree with older woman Ram Kassoon when she said, quote, "The vote to provide gray water wasn't a gatekeeper of a project of this scale," unquote. But I think it was obvious that it was at least a factor. But how much weight did Joe DiStefano's strongly worded letter to Angelo Cuomo have in influencing the viability of making CPV a reality? And if it would have no effect, why even send it in the first place? I wonder if the gray water deal was the only deal Middletown had with CPV. We have a moral obligation to protect our residents from health risks by pulling out this one deal. Even if we exclude the health risk, it is a net financial benefit to pull out if we did a cost-benefit analysis. Even now, I'm seeing home values decreasing. I propose that instead of assuming that it is dumb to pull out, that we hire an actuary to perform a real cost-benefit analysis. But I have no faith that one will be performed, for the truth is sometimes too much for people to handle. The truth is, our democracy is fractured due to big money in politics and corrupt politicians. It is apparent even in our local level. I mean, I ran against Joe DiStefano because -- only because no one else would. Through some technicalities, it was the Republican committee chair who got me off the ballot, yet Joe is a Democrat. In what democracy and in what world is a process that enables a man to win before election day legal or even the lightest, slightest bit moral? No wonder only around eight percent of Middletown voted. Who wouldn't have won against those numbers? Even a nobody like myself would have won, and someone realized that. Now our property values will go down. Our taxes will keep going up. Our air will be poisoned. Our children sick, and the poor unable to move out. This is a curse, and it's unfortunate, because Middletown is a good city, and so are its people. I can't wait for the town hall meeting with our amazing police chief. I refuse to believe our politicians are above the law. Thank you.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Ms. Massey. You would -- whoa, 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 don't leave. I'm speaking to you. You were tempted to run. Yeah, that's exactly -- let me clarify. Let me clarify it. Go ahead. What you did was so egregious. You went out and you got petitions. You know, we all run. We have certain regulations. You get petitions by people who can actually vote for you to sign it.
That's what I did.
You hand it in. I don't have the number any longer. They reduced it down at the Board of Elections because you had people didn't live anywhere near Middletown.
That's incorrect. All the addresses were Middletown.
That's a lie.
Through technicalities.
I still had -- there was no --
As signatures.
There was no technicality.
Seven hundred and twenty-six pages of New York State election laws. You were able to exploit that for --
Exploit? The Board of Elections looked at every one of your signatures and reduced it down to seventy-seven. You needed one hundred and eighty-six. All right, let's move on to Department Heads, Economic Development.
Council President, members of the common council, I'd like to defer my remarks tonight to bring up a great program that's happening up at the Horton campus, the Middletown Accelerator. And the mayor will introduce the folks that are behind it. Mayor?
Thank you, Maria. All of you that were on the council last year do recall the Middletown Accelerator program. The Orange -- the City of Middletown IDA participated with some seed money in the program for the new council members. I believe it was $24,000. The program is being operated at the former Horton Hospital, and although we did have discussions about expanding the program beyond the original seed money with city funds, potential injection of some city funds, it wasn't necessary for 2018's program. The Orange County IDA came through with funding, and you're going to hear about the program and the success of the program. Next, on March 13th, is the grand opening of the program. All of you have been invited. The public will be invited also. So for tonight's purposes, I'm going to ask that the representatives of the Accelerator program come up and speak and address what is happening on that campus besides Toro and all the other good things. The IDA had a briefing at seven o'clock, and I believe that it was very well-received by the members of the IDA. So if I could, Ed Diana, who is the chair of the Accelerator Committee and board member of the Orange County IDA, is with us. Vinnie Casalino, managing director of the Accelerator and the Orange County IDA, and Lori Villasusso, who is the chief operating officer of the Accelerator and the Orange County IDA. They're here to make a presentation. I don't think it's going to be a lengthy one. If we let Lori and Eddie speak, but if we let Vinnie speak, it will be a lengthy one.
Lori, Lori.
We'll limit Vinnie and let Lori do most of the talking. So -- but I think you're going to be impressed by what you see, and I'm hoping that as we move forward, that this is a real seed program for economic development, and we'll have an opportunity now to start opening a dialogue with them to how to take this beautiful project, this huge investment of money by the Orange County IDA and other agencies, and then make that grow into economic development within our city. So Lori, are you going to start off? Lori Villasusso.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. I'm Lori Villasusso, chief operating officer of the Orange County IDA and the Accelerator. As Joe mentioned, we are going to be opening our Middletown Accelerator campus here next week, so we are very excited about it. I'm here today to talk to you a little about it, to bring you up to speed, give you a little bit of the history, and then kind of give you an advance notice of what's going on there going forward. So luckily, I have a micro machines degree in speaking, so hopefully, I'll be able to talk fast enough to fit all of it in in five minutes. So what you're looking at behind me here is a picture of the Accelerator as it is now. What it used to be is the second -- or the third floor, rather, of the Horton Medical Complex, right above Toro Medical College. What we've done with that space is to bring in state funding that we've worked through a partner, 501(c)(3) of ours, to retrofit the space in order to allow thirteen companies to move in and operate. All of these companies are startups, but not startups in the typical sense that they're just a person with a pencil and a dream. They're actually companies that are sort of small companies that are interested in validating their product and scaling up, getting a brighter customer, broader customer base, and a wider customer network, as well as increasing their product offerings. The IDA currently has an accelerator in the town of New Windsor. We have actually expanded out of our one building into two others, and we're working on a third. That accelerator is focused on the garment industry, in the fashion design and production industry. It's at its full capacity. This accelerator is focused on the incredible medical corridor that exists between here in Middletown and the town of Walk Hill. It's all medical devices, medical programming, software, and personal care products. I would ask my Vanna White here to bring my second board.
That's no Vanna White.
My apologies for the quality of our Vanna White. The Middletown Accelerator -- Middletown Accelerating proprietary programming is how this project started. The name didn't stick, but the accelerator in Middletown did, so that's good news. Basically, our goal was to attract medical companies to grow and operate out of the Horton complex in the city of Middletown. So we worked with the Toro Medical College, of course, the City of Middletown IDA, this lovely body. We had a funding strategy that started with the county IDA and the city IDA. We brought in our partners at TSEC, that's T-S-E-C. They are our 501(c) sort of sister not-for-profit, 501(c)(3). They helped us fund CFA dollars to the project, so we retrofit the facility to the tune of about $130,000, and those funds came from TSEC. So they're a really incredible partner of ours. WDI, the Workforce Development Institute, has provided grants to us for further operation, as well as for the companies that are in the accelerator. And the Danza Group, who owns the Horton Complex, has been an incredible partner on us. Are the chair of our Accelerator Committee. Our lovely Eddie Diana was able to coordinate and negotiate with the Danza Group to ensure that we have eighteen months' free rent for our accelerator clients. That was a big attraction initiative for them. The benefits of Middletown, I don't have to tell you guys. You know, there's transportation, there's an incredible downtown. You're obviously the winners of the DRI. So the intent is that we're going to continue to foster growth within the city and at the Horton Complex. The investment that we've brought to this is about a million dollars at this point. We've managed to, again, leverage the $24,000 that the City of Middletown IDA so generously offered at the outset of this program to get in-kind services from the landlord, money from the Orange County IDA, and again, some of the other partners that I've mentioned before. One of the things about this was that we had a very aggressive marketing strategy when we came into it, because we really had the idea that we wanted to foster a programming and software initiative in the city of Middletown, so that we could get jobs that were $50,000, $60,000 a year to start, rather than starting at lower levels. To our great surprise and great happiness, we didn't have to go with such a great and aggressive marketing campaign, because word spread very organically in the programming and software community. We did hold a hackathon at FATN College. We've done a lot of little events here in the city of Middletown to kind of bring attention to it. But the network of those communities of those companies are small, and they started talking, and we are at full capacity before we even opened, which is really exciting. Vanna, number two, number three, I guess. So this, I won't go through every single detail of this timeline with you, but suffice it to say, there's been a lot of work that happened since our initial strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threat analysis with the mayor. So we initially intended to develop this corridor. We wanted to attract our thirteen companies. We have done that, luckily for us. We included the City of Middletown Accelerator in the DRI plan, or the mayor and Maria Bruni have included it in the DRI plan. It was submitted as part of the plan, but not funded. We'd like to sort of capitalize on that maybe going forward. But initially, what we've done here, and I'm going to make sure I speak into the microphone and gesticulate. So the City of Middletown supported us to the tune of $24,000. The City of Middletown won the DRI. Congratulations. We provided details to include it. We worked with Danza Group and Toro and FATN to really build and flesh out that concept, to make sure that there was a partnership between the college students at FATN and Toro, as well as with the city, to make sure that everybody was benefiting from the location in Middletown. The -- we searched for our companies. We designed a layout. We signed the lease, giving eighteen months free rent to our tenants and to us. And then the IDA of Orange County has signed a five-year lease essentially with the Danza Group for this space. So we're committed to the space for five years. Construction began. We weren't included in the DRI plan, but we intend -- we held a kickoff event, which was attended by some of our council members and Mr. Richard here from the city. It had all of our companies, and right there at the outset, they were already kind of figuring out the synergies that they had with one another. Just as an example, and all of these will be announced, and you'll be able to meet them all next week, but we have a company who works with Google Glass-type technology to help you -- help nurses and doctors find veins when you're getting IVs so that you don't have to poke around there if someone has a little challenge there. So these are companies that are really moving forward. They have a lot of plans to grow and move on out of Horton, but we'll talk about that in a moment. So construction continued. We worked with companies before they prepared to move in to make sure that they're ready for this space and to make sure that they're intending to grow. We've made sure that we actually had to expand the footprint because it was so exciting, and it was interesting to enough people that we added another about 2,000 square feet onto our space to allow for more companies to include. The Orange County IDA appropriated more funding to let it go on. We introduced WDI, which again, is an incredible partner of ours. They've helped us, but they've also helped each of our entrepreneurs secure small grants for equipment, machinery. And then we are at full capacity with thirteen companies right now, twenty-five jobs to start. In addition to those thirteen companies, we also have three companies that are a little too mature for our accelerator, but they want to be proximal to the accelerator. So they're actually locating within the Horton Complex as of right now as sort of partner companies. They're all in the medical field. One makes artificial blood. One makes a molecular delivery thing. I don't know. I'm not a scientist, so I think -- that might be the technical term. But they make -- they have a molecular delivery apparatus for anti-inflammatories or antibiotics. So those companies are too mature, but they're interested in locating there because they want to work with the companies that are in the accelerator. In addition to that, we facilitated the ongoing collaboration between the companies. The other thing that's very exciting is that they're helping each other network. They're sharing services. They're trying to find ways that they can complement each other's product offerings as they roll out to market. The -- we assessed a need, then, for a medical-grade clean room. So within this facility, we have so many medical companies that are going to require further testing and further growth. All of these companies could benefit from the use of a medical-grade clean room. The Orange County IDA, the Workforce Development Institute, and the Danza Group have all contributed money. We've gathered $250,000 to install that medical-grade clean room right there at Horton. That's very exciting, because that helps us attract our new companies, but it also helps the companies that are there grow and continue growing. That's the $250. And then today, we're visiting with you guys to talk about all of our progress. And then on Tuesday, we are having our grand opening, which we very much look forward to all of you being there. Very quickly, at the future part of this, the next phase of this, once our companies are in, we don't just let them go and sort of let them be on their own. We're very actively involved. We want to make sure that we get any sort of We're very actively involved, we want to make sure that we get any sort of ongoing support to them, to ensure their growth. Our idea is that they grow, of course, in the city of Middletown, we want them to grow onto Horton Campus. Actually, Mr. Danza has also agreed to work with each company if they'd like to graduate into a different space in the Horton Complex. He'll work with them on their rent to make sure that it's a little bit more palatable for them, so that they have the opportunity to grow, at least maybe not in place, close by. So this, once we install and certify this medical-grade clean room, that'll be an incredible attraction incentive, because the other thing that we have to do is to continue to backfill our log of companies. Our idea is that all of these companies are going to grow out either into the city of Middletown or into Horton, and we have to fill them back up. So we're constantly working on finding new companies. We are working with high schools, right now, we've worked with Pine Bush so far in the past, but developing sort of work, or school-to-work programs. For students who may not be destined for college, there may be some opportunities for students to partner early on in their academic careers and make the shift right into the workforce, especially with, with high schools that have CAD programming, 3D printing, all of these things are really important in this industry. The Clinical Research Assistant Program is something that's very attractive to the companies that are located on-site, something for them to move forward with their products, they need these certified assistants, and we are going to drive that initiative to get these, it's about 200-hour, I think, program, so we're going to find funding for that and then provide that. These companies have committed to hiring six people, once we can find six certified people, to assist. The ongoing support of the companies, so what we do after a company is in the accelerator, we have all sorts of initiatives, so we're very hands-on, very intimately involved with all of our companies. So we work with them on supply chain to see what we can find for them that's local, that they don't necessarily have to source from elsewhere. We want to make sure that our local businesses profit from also having these companies grow. We have any licensing or FDA requirements, because these are all medical-grade products and offerings, they have to make sure that they're, you know, in compliance with all the rules. I'm a compliance girl, so it's all about, I'm all about that. Grant writing, as we move forward with these companies, we try to find funding sources for them that may not be as, you know, as typical as a bank, so if there's a grant opportunity, we'll find a grant writer at our expense, the grant writer works with them and helps them manage it going forward, because those can be tricky. As they set up their operations, we help, we have engineers who can help them with their process flow, we help them develop their programs, we help them train their workforce, because that's how we get measured, is how many jobs are created out of it. So as they onboard people, we like to make sure that they're properly staffed for, you know, or properly equipped to answer HR questions, make sure that their people are trained appropriately, and especially if you're dealing with medical devices, that safety is first and foremost. And then business planning, so the whole idea here is that they're going to grow, we make sure that their plan isn't just to stay in place and never do anything, we want to make sure that their intent is to live and function in this accelerator for maybe three years up to that, and then grow out into whatever space fits best for them in the city of Middletown. And then, of course, there's a, the partnerships with schools and hospitals, we're right upstairs from Toro, so we love to partner with Toro, and especially with those students who will be graduating out into the medical field, hopefully they'll take advantage of some new emerging technologies as they make their way in their careers. And of course, Crystal Run and ORMC are here, so we try to make sure that we get as much networking going as we can at the early stages. And then telemedicine is the next big thing, you know, none of us are going to go to the doctor anymore, we're going to talk to them all from our phones, because who, I can't get enough on my phone, I don't know about you guys, so I'll see my doctor with it now. But we want to make sure that we're ahead of that industry, too, because as that becomes a national rollout, we want our companies to be able to take advantage of any sort of inroads we can make, grant opportunities, funding opportunities, and research opportunities. So I think that, I'm out of breath, and I believe that I was, I would love to see you all next week, and I'm open for any questions, should you have any.
Any question from Aldman Jean-François?
Yes, you had mentioned that you reach out to Pine Bush.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a possibility of you working with Middletown School District?
We would love to work with every school district, so yes, I saw who was here today. So yeah, we really are interested in that, you know, it's something as, I would love to. I would love to, because it's, school-to-work is something that's near and dear to my heart, so I would love to, absolutely. So yes, we will, I'll give you my card. Yes.
Anyone else?
What's DRI?
Downtown Revitalization Initiative. Sorry, I speak in acronyms now, I'm so rude, I didn't even translate. Yes.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. All right, did I make it under my five minutes?
No. You'll let Vinnie speak. PPW Commissioner. It's going to snow, right?
Good evening, all. We'll start off on February the 27th, as you know, the governor had an initiative for harmful algae blooms in there, and they selected us from the city of Middletown to be in the steering committee, which was a great honor, it was, selection was done by the New York State Department of Health. And there's $65 million in there, a grant that's going to be given to a few lakes, and Monhegan, Shawangang Highland, and, and Mill Pond would be part of it, so we're very excited about that. Hopefully, a final report and recommendation from panel of experts will be available by, by beginning of May, middle of May. After that, there's going to be a work plan, and we have submitted quite a few grants for that money. Hopefully, we can be recipients of some of that funding in there, which is specially dedicated for harmful algae bloom, in order to fight it and to stop it, to find, to find the causes of it. The mayor was there, Council President Alderman Massey, Maria was there, and it was very exciting, all-day event, again, included the panel of experts in there. And with that, I saw Darren Cross over here, he came and he spoke for, for the good of the city. I just want to recognize him, he's one of the valuable operators that we have in the city of Middletown Water Treatment Plant, and algae bloom is, he's the biggest fighter against, against the bloom, and he tries to keep it at bay from us, and he's very experienced in that line of work, and he's the one who applies copper sulfate, and copper sulfate is one of the means that kills the algae before it becomes a bloom. So I just want to recognize him as being one of our valuable employees. Now, we have had wet weather lately, obviously, and we have had a lot of several sanitary sewer overflows, and we have to report those immediately to DEC. That prompted DOC to issue a letter of violation. On Thursday, the mayor, myself, and Chris Gross, we're going to be going to the DEC up in White Plains in order to talk about technical issues regarding this matter. The heart of it really is INI, which is inflow and infiltration, and for that, I just want to do like a public service message in here for home, all homeowners, property owners in the city. If you do have a sump pump connected to your sanitary sewer line, that is an illegal connection, you must disconnect, connect that and send it over to the storm sewer system or to the back of your property. Also, downspouts for the rain, for the gutters, some of them are connected directly, the old connections, they go into the sanitary sewer. That is illegal, that is causing us a lot of problems in there, that causes a sewer during a rain event to come up and, and, and flow into the street, which is a very, very nasty thing to happen. So we need the public help, we need the public to, to help us out with minimizing the INI by disconnecting their, their sump pumps or downspouts or gutters from our sanitary sewer. You can connect it to your storm sewer, you can, you can pump it to your backyard, but not into our sanitary sewer, please, it's costing us a lot of money. We are, we're spending a lot of money in our sewer lines, we're just finishing $5 million project for sanitary, for Sterling Street, even putting a boring under Wisner Avenue Railroad Tracks. We're starting a new project in the black dirt sewer that is associated with the new school, that's $4 million, and that's all coming out of, well, there's, some of it is grant, there's a $1 million grant. But we are spending a lot of money, but we need the public help to disconnect their sump pumps or downspouts or gutters from our sanitary sewer lines, please. It's an illegal practice, and our court enforcements, they are going, they are looking for it, and if we find that, you know, unfortunately, there's going to be some court action, so please, help us out. Before you tonight, you have two capital projects in there, which is finally, they're coming to fruition, which is the Maple Avenue and West Main Street, you're, hopefully, you'll be voting to award the contracts to the contractor, and once you award the contract, the contract, hopefully, once we get all the paperwork together, the mayor will sign it, hopefully, and then we have until the end of the month to cut down the trees associated with these projects, otherwise, they cannot be touched after that. And also, we're hiring a private chief operator in order to manage our wastewater treatment plant, so that, that will be before you tonight for resolution. Do you have any questions?
Question for Jacob. Aldman Kleiner.
Thank you, I keep forgetting to ask you otherwise, but New York Rising, have we heard anything about that money and the project?
New York Rising, yeah, the design is, is ongoing. As a matter of fact, we, we generated a whole list of sub-projects from that New York Rising after the technical review that they have done, and we will be applying for additional grants under, it's called New York Bridge, that's a new grant money coming out, I believe it was like $250 million in there. So we'll be working with those same engineers in there who identified some deficiencies within our underground culverts, such as the Monhegan Brook and the Draper Brook, to try to apply for additional funding, that will be over and above the $3.5 million. No final recommendation has been made yet about, about purchasing of private property or daylighting any parts of the culvert or anything like that yet.
Do we still have time in the project?
Yes, when we had the meeting, we had, we met with New York Rising, we, we met with the management, Lori DuBois and the, the board? The board, I'm sorry.
Is there a deadline?
There was a deadline, I don't remember it off.
2019 expired, or the money expired?
Yeah, I don't, honestly, I wasn't prepared for this, I don't, I don't want to throw dates I'm not, I'm not sure of, but when we met, when we had that meeting, which I addressed like a month before, ago, or two months ago, we have, we still have time, but I'll, next, next council meeting, I will get you the deadlines for it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jacob. Fire chief?
Excuse me, one second. Evening, everybody, I'm representing Danny tonight, there's nothing to report, but if you have any questions, I'll take them back and get some answers for you.
Any question for the new fire chief? Welcome.
Thank you.
Police chief?
Good evening, just a couple items this evening. First, I'd like to just remind people that NICSOL is up and running. We did put some information out twice this week so far, we used it once for a test here in City Hall, and then once again today, to put out some information in regards to the storm and keep the streets clean. For anybody that's not aware, sitting at home, it is a software program that allows us to communicate with our community, to push out information and receive the information funnel back to us as well. For anybody that would like to sign on, it's a quick, easy text from their cell phone, if they text 888-777, text Middletown, the word Middletown with a capital M, to 888-777, it'll sign you into the NICSOL program, and you'll receive our updates. The second item I have is just a reminder, next Thursday, March 15th, at 7:00 PM, I'll be hosting a town hall-style meeting right here in the common council chambers. I encourage all residents to please come out, it's an opportunity for you to air your concerns, share your, your positive, your negative interactions with the police, build rapport, to better improve the community relations, this is a great opportunity, if nothing else, just to meet me and my staff, and to let us know where we need to approve, improve, and what's important to you as city residents. Other than that, any questions?
Question for the police chief. Thank you, chief. Corporation counsel.
Nothing this evening, unless you have any questions.
Question from Rich. Thank you, Richard. City clerk.
Just, I had a couple calls about licensed electricians in the city of Middletown, I just wanted the public to know that the list is on the website, and it's for the plumbers and for the electricians, they are the licensed plumbers. In January, February is when all the renewals are done, and all those lists are, have been updated, I just wanted to let the public know. That's all I have for this evening.
Question for John. Thank you, John.
Good evening. A couple of positive notes. The Committee for the Bob Beirstow Annual St. Patrick's Day Benefit would like to let the council and the general public know about the upcoming event. The Walk Hill Engine Company Number Six of the Middletown Fire Department, along with the friends and family of Bob Beirstow, are hosting a St. Patrick's Day Benefit on Saturday, May, March 17th, at the Middletown Elks Club. The time is 6:00 PM, and the cost at the door is $35 per person. This includes a delicious corned beef dinner, chicken for those who don't eat corned beef, but I don't know who doesn't eat corned beef on March 17th, beer, wine, soda, and dessert. There will be Irish step dancers, not the Beirstow family, Larry and, and the gang, but there will be legitimate Irish step dancers, and a backpiper as well, along with raffles and tricky tray, and wonderful donations from many of the businesses in our community. This year's proceeds will benefit both the Walk Hill Engine Company Number Six, as well as the Middletown Parks and Rec Department Scholarship Program for Youth Programs, and that's why we're here announcing it tonight. The event is bound to be a wonderful time for two great causes. As most of you know, Bob was a lifelong Middletown resident, proud of his family and proud of his community, and proud of his fire company. He ran the Neil Turfle Tanama each year, generating thousands of dollars for the Walk Hill Fire Company, or helped run it. Please help us continue to honor Bob's memory by supporting the event. Information you can check with Mary Zee, there is a website, Mary Zee is Mary Zehorek, she's also my secretary, there's a website with all the information also, and the information is on Channel 23 as well. I'm sure they would appreciate your support, and, and the, to the Walk Hills and the Middletown Parks and Rec would support, will appreciate your assistance and the generous donation they will be making. I wanted to thank the Middletown Little League and Darren Cross for coming here and making a presentation. I don't recall the last time the Little League was here, addressing the board, and I'm, I'm experiencing it firsthand this year, my grandson is three, almost four years old and playing T-ball, and they have a lot of very patient volunteers, I can assure you that, and so they, we will be, the city will be represented at the, at the annual parade, and I note for the council, it is a Saturday morning this year, not the traditional Sunday afternoon. One area, recycling, I know, I mentioned it in my State of the State, Aldman Jean-François has been a major pusher, person pushing increased recycling, and as you know, the numbers haven't changed, the 6% participation rate hasn't changed over the years. At his urging, we are going to pick up recycling now every week, rather than skip the 13 weeks in which there are holidays. The Board of Estiment has approved it, so we will make it effective immediately, so there will be no longer a piling up of recycling at your home, encouraging you to put it in the garbage, in the regular garbage. We're hoping this will have an effect on, in a positive way. It's going to cost some money, but we're going to figure out the money part later with some vacancy review, but for now, the county, the Board of Estiment has approved it, and it is in effect right now, so the next holiday, I'm not sure when it's coming up, I believe might, I'm, I'm not sure, but the next city sanctioned holiday, but that week, what is it?
Good Friday.
Good Friday, okay. That week, recycling will be picked up, so please note that. We will do a NICSOL notification, as Chief Beth, ah, Chief Bethencourt, my gosh, what a mistake that was. Gosh.
An insult.
That was an insult. No, no. We like Chief Bethencourt, and we like Chief Ouachua, but he, as he mentioned, the NICSOL system is very important, especially in times like this where we may have to call a snow emergency tomorrow, and when we do order a snow emergency, that will require all vehicles to be removed from city streets, so, or they're subject to be towed, and also, there's a whole bunch of laws that kick in effect when a snow emergency is declared, that don't protect your vehicle as a vehicle owner. So if we do call a snow emergency, it will be notified over NICSOL, along with any other means that we have, but it's very important for people to start signing up for the program, and hopefully, if you haven't done so, you will do so very soon. We had a conference call today, a statewide conference call regarding the storm. The governor's office had all different, all of the state agencies on from MTA to Throwaway Authority, they did talk about the possibility of coordinated services if there is a major disaster in a community, so we do have emergency numbers in place, the, they are expecting, from what they said today, possibly 12 to 16 inches of snow north of 84, and of course, we are north of 84. So we're hoping that it's not as bad as people are saying, but they're expecting the worst, so please, our residents, be prepared for tomorrow, to keep your car off the street as much as possible, I believe the snow is going to start sometime this evening or later tonight, and we, we hope that- And we hope that you will cooperate with the request to keep your vehicle off of the city streets. I've been trying to post as much on Facebook as I possibly can regarding CPV. As you know, we're in contact with them on a daily basis. Today's activity regarding CPV, they completed their last steam blow this morning at about 6:30 AM and the plant is now shut down. The steam was quite visible this morning on 84 in the south end of the city. They are beginning their restoration period, which will be several weeks. So this plant will not operate during the restoration period of several weeks. I met last week with Ed Diana and the Walk Hill Town Board. We've been in contact with Dave Cole, the councilman and the town of Wayyanda, who was kind enough to come last week here. And we're going to be discussing with them the possibilities of additional monitoring that would be shared costs between the communities. And of course, we're going to probably approach CPV requesting that they pick up the tab at some point. The reason why we don't do it now is we want it to be as independent as possible. We don't want CPV to be controlling our independent engineer. Today, we had, as you know, the independent engineering company that we hired is CDM Smith. And they've been in contact with both the DEC and the CPV and of course, the city. There was a conference call today that, first, I'd like to thank the regional director of the DEC, Kelly Totoro, for her attention that she's been paying to this matter and real focus that the DEC has put on this issue since we started calling and since CDM got involved in the project. They've made a major impact on the operation of the facility. And I just want to read some of the comments from today's conference call. Cynthia Hibbert is our representative from CDM. The attendees on the phone was a conference call. We're not only the regional director, Kelly Totoro, George Schweikart, Alyssa, we don't have a last name on Alyssa, but Andrew Chain from the region. We also had the Albany Central Office of DEC, Chris Hogan, Bob Stanton, Chris Malone. I was on for part of the call. Jacob Twill was on the entire call, along with representatives from CDM Smith, Cynthia Hibbert, Dave Smith and Amit Sen. The purpose was to share the information about excess emissions from the CPV plant during the commissioning process. We want to know what their plans were for minimizing these emissions and to coordinate oversight, monitoring and compliance assurances activities to protect the community from any additional excess emissions. Director Totoro stated that the DEC had spoken with the city regarding the air monitoring of CPV on a few occasions. And she understood and that the city had hired CDM, CDM was present and CDM was now representing the city with any calls and communications with the DEC along with our representative, Jacob Twill. Jacob brought up the fact that we not only want a short-term plan for monitoring, but we also want a long-term plan and that Cynthia Hibbert from CDM would lead the discussion on that with CPV and the DEC. On February 24th, CDM met with CPV. At the startup was operating, they were operating the turbines at a low load while performing the steam blows. During these activities, air pollution control devices were not online. We have mentioned that before, that was part of the problem. The air pollution control devices were not online. This resulted in widespread community impacts and complaints of diesel fumes from February 18th through the 19th. CPV has since increased the turbine load with no heat recovery, some technical stuff in here, to increase exhaust temperatures and flows to help with dispersion. CDM Smith understands that the continuous emission monitoring systems are not yet required to be operating under the EPA guidelines and that CPV does not have to meet air emission standards, air emission limits during the shakedown period, which is this period of bringing the plant up to operation. However, as a major source of hazardous air pollutants, CPD does have, quote, "a general duty to minimize emissions during all operations." CPV then agreed and stated to the city that they will install the selective catalytic reduction and oxidation catalysts, which are the air control devices, after completing the steam blows, which were done today. And during the next several weeks, when the plant was in a shutdown period, for the steam blow restoration, CDM Smith will likely identify what steps can be taken to minimize the excess emissions when they restart the plant a few weeks down the road and what options are available for monitoring CPV's operations, both during commissioning and long-term. George from the DEC stated that they had a conversation with CPV and CPV provided the same information on operating the turbines as we had previously had. CPV committed to the DEC that CPV would operate the turbines exclusively at high loads. However, the DEC was at the site on Sunday and Monday and yesterday and the day before yesterday and observed, the DEC observed diesel fumes at ground level. As of today, CPV has completed the steam blows, as I mentioned, and has shut down the plant for at least three weeks. When CPV restarts, they will be burning fuel until May 1st, when CPV will complete the equipment testing and commissioning. After May 1st, CPV will not operate until they have natural gas available. CPV has agreed to compress their testing schedule on fuel oil. CDM asked if the DEC is understanding that the SCR and oxidation catalyst control devices will be operating when CPV restarts the turbines in three weeks and the DEC confirmed yes. That is a big plus for the air emission issue. CDM asked if DEC believes that CPV has had any permit violations during the commissioning to date. The DEC stated that CPV has not been meeting, has not been meeting, the plume opacity requirements and has not been keeping daily opacity records. DEC has issued a warning, but is not taking additional enforcement action at this time. DEC has asked CPV to maintain a logbook of plume opacity observations at a minimum of three to four times a day and to have that person who's performing the test or the visual to sign it. If CPV has had a visible plume for more than a couple of hours, they must mitigate immediately and conduct a formal Method 9 opacity reading. Jacob can probably explain that a little bit better than I could. Regarding sampling, George from DEC stated any sampling CDM Smith plans to do should take place three weeks from now. The plant is located near Route 84, therefore it will be difficult to isolate plant emissions from traffic emissions. Cynthia stated that the aldehydes is the primary hazardous air pollutant of concern and that we are asking for monitoring of that. But she acknowledged that tracking the plant's plume with ground level monitoring would be difficult. Jacob participated. He asked and requested if stack testing should be considered. The DEC does not have a regulatory limit on all types of testing from combustion sources and cannot require stack testing for the formaldehyde. Cynthia stated that there is no continuous monitoring device for that, but portable samplers are available and that would be something we may look into. CDM also asked if the DEC would consider requiring CPV to install continuous opacity monitors, also known as COMs. And George stated that the DEC has received CPV's pre-construction permit renewal application. DEC has discussed requiring COMs and will add this to the permit, given the opacity issues CPV has had. The COMs will not be installed and operating until the end of this year, however. But it is a significant move for the DEC to require that in their permanent permit. CDM also asked if remote sensor cameras should be considered to monitor opacity for the short term. The DEC stated that the DEC has asked CPV to monitor opacity every day and submit the results to them, to the DEC quarterly. In addition, DEC will be at the CPV plant every day and DEC will check the plume opacity. DEC has certified Method 9 observers. He does not think that installing a camera to monitor plume opacity for the short term would be necessary. Jacob stated that for the benefit of the citizens, actual air sample should be taken. The DEC stated that DEC has collected one-hour SUMA canister samples, one upwind sample and two downward samples for hazardous air pollutants to be analyzed by a certain method that's called TO-15. DEC will share the results with the city and of course, the city will share those results and make them public after we receive them. After review, the DEC and the city could discuss the next steps for possible stamping. So to summarize, the DEC will be at the site every day when the plant operates and starts up again in three weeks and through the remainder of the commissioning testing period on fuel oil, which should end May 1st. DEC will check to make sure that CPV operates the SCR and oxidation catalysts, air pollution control equipment whenever the turbines are running. The DEC will check to make sure that CPV keeps its commitments to run turbines at high load and high exhaust temperatures during the fuel commissioning period. DEC will check CPV's opacity records and procedures and they will also conduct independent opacity observations and check that the CPV implements appropriate mitigation when opacity limits are exceeded. The DEC will share the results of its Method TO-15 sampling and work with the city to conduct additional sampling when the CPV plant starts up again in three weeks. The DEC will consult with its lab for recommendations on different sampling methods. And the DEC will add a requirement to CPV's air construction permit renewal that they install, maintain and operate continuous opacity monitors for the turbine exhaust. And the DEC will provide to the city CPV's quarterly monitoring reports, including opacity, SEMS data and stack results. The DEC, George from the DEC also provided his number, which many people have because he said he's been receiving calls, but we'll give it again. It's 845-256-3185 and his name is George and he's, you know, is very much open to receiving So I think we've been making progress in that area. We're not where we need to be, but we've made tremendous progress. Utilizing, I think it was an excellent move to hire CDM to bring them onboard. The other part I wanted to add is that the people have legitimate concerns about CPV. And we have raised that over and over and over. CPV, can't say it enough, is in the town of Wayyanda. The city of Middletown did not conduct the environmental review. The environmental review was concluded, the findings came out in 2012. The city is selling gray water, which makes the project greener, and that agreement was signed in 2013. You know, social media is a great thing and it's also a crazy thing sometimes. And some of the things that people are saying on social media about the city of Middletown and its participation in this project are outright lies. That the city of Middletown is not going to just walk away and shut off the water to CPV, the gray water. If we did that, you might as well pack up your home and move now because you would be subject to a litigation that would take your home away and take the whole city away. So it's a crazy argument to make. Our job, after the environmentals were done and after the project became a reality and we made it a greener project, is to now hold CPV's feet to the fire as we are doing and we will continue to do and continue to hire the monitoring company. Walk Hill and Wayyanda are interested in sharing those costs. I also understand the Village of Goshen may be interested in doing so also with some of the monitoring. So we will be putting together with CDM a plan as we move forward and of course, working with the DEC. On the fracked gas issue, because that seems to be something that I have heard over and over and over, that the fracked gas is somehow creating this toxic, even when the plant is up and running, unnatural gas, that some of the people, the opponents of CPV, for some reason are making people, leading people to believe that this fracked gas is so toxic that it's going to kill everybody in our community and is really going to try to drive down property values in our community. So I started doing some research on fracked gas and with no opinion on whether fracked gas is good or fracked gas is bad. What I can tell you, as of 2015, 50% of the natural gas used in New York State to heat your homes, to heat your businesses, comes from fracked wells. 50%. So to make an argument that this plant, because it is going to be using natural gas coming from Pennsylvania, is somehow unique and is going to destroy the Hudson Valley, is incorrect. You're using it now. Orange and Rockland uses fracked gas to heat your home. We're waiting for the numbers. You want to shut off the fracked gas because New York produces basically no fracked gas and produces very little natural gas at all of any kind. But my argument is not about fracked gas. Some of the opponents and the real radical opponents on social media, their issue is not CPV. We're going to handle the CPV emissions or we're going to litigate and get it shut down, just like the DEC said in some of their observations. That is where, if CPV doesn't follow what they said in their environmental reports, and by the way, I had one critic on Facebook, a former school board member, who was criticizing the report of the environmental findings of the town of Wayyanda. And I asked him, I said, "Your company, the company you worked for, they did it. Tell me what's wrong with it. Tell me what's inaccurate about it." Because we'd be more than happy to go after your company if they misrepresented the environmental findings. He hasn't responded. So my point is, is that people have legitimate concerns. After February 19th, we have real legitimate concerns. We're taking the right steps. CDM is an excellent company. The DEC is very much involved, not only from the regional director, but as you can see from today, from the Albany office, everybody has the arrows pointing at CPV. If they don't do the right thing, we will litigate. But in the meantime, this fracked gas argument has to be put to sleep, at least from the operational point of CPV, because 50% in 2015, the number's much higher in 2018. I don't know what the number is yet, but it's much higher. 67% of natural gas produced in the United States of America in 2015 came from fracked wells. So let's not make this an argument about fracked gas. Let's make this an argument, and I don't support fracking, by the way. I went up to Albany and I lobbied against it. But it's here. So let's make this a, our focus as a city and as a city council and myself, is to make sure this plant operates the way it said it would operate, the way they submitted to Wayyanda, the way they submitted to the DEC and the EPA. And that should be our focus. We'll continue to fund CDM. They're doing a great job for us and whatever comes forth, we'll handle it when it happens. So, any questions?
Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, old MacLaren.
Yes, sir.
Hi, not on CPV, but on the...
Hi, not on CPV, but on the March for Peace. I know Reverend Charles had asked about if we could do a resolution tonight supporting it. Is that something that you would be?
Yeah, I, I had so many papers in front of me, I missed that, the note. I did meet with Reverend Charles and, and offered whatever support we could give with or without a resolution. He's correct, we don't really need a resolution, but if you want to show a sign of support, that certainly would be welcome. Our involvement will be having police do the escort and allowing them to use the field in the back here by the skateboard, skateboard park area. And we could provide with them, you know, if they need a stage or if they need something to speak from, we'll, we'll help them in that area. But a symbolic resolution certainly would be appropriate and something I would support.
Okay.
All right. Oh, I, you know, I didn't touch on SROs. That's, that's another thing. I told you I was going to be long tonight and you shouldn't have asked me a question. Back in 2015, when we were having the swatting issues at the schools, I wrote to Senator Bonisak and Assemblywoman Gunther requesting that school resource officers be removed from the, not only the tax cap, but also be removed from, subject to a vote by local residents. The reason being is I am a strong supporter of SROs in the schools. In order for us to have trained SROs in the schools, it takes several months of training and we have to train, train multiple officers, obviously, because we have multiple schools. If that, we would probably require additional staff. The school would pick up the burden of the cost only during school time when the officer is at, you know, for example, the summers when school's off, they wouldn't have the SRO. So usually, I think in the past, when we did it in the past, it came out to maybe two-thirds school, one-third city. So we have to make a commitment of additional funding. That funding should not be subject to an annual appropriation or an annual budget vote. I'm sure there are formulas that could be worked out, but we do need SROs back in our schools at every level and I, we, we do need to do it right so it's not subject, as it was in the past, to change on an annual basis at the whim of the school board or at the whim of the voter, or I think school security is a major, major focus for, for all of us and it's really getting a, a lot of attention now. And that, so I, I did send, resend those letters to Senator Bonisak and Assemblywoman Gunther, asking them for at least a discussion on the issue to see what part the state would play, not only in funding, but removing them from the budget and allowing Middletown and the Middletown School District, if both agree, to fund SROs in the schools that are located within the city of Middletown. So I just wanted to give you an update on that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, reports of Alden, Alden Burr, Alden Jean-François, Alden Kleiner.
Thank you. We'll have a, Alden Green and I will be having a second ward constituents meeting on Tuesday, March 12th. We invite anyone to attend who has questions about the city that we can answer or try and get answers to. That's most often the case. The communications committee met tonight and we discussed the idea of doing a citywide ID card, Middletown ID, and I think we made some progress on the issue. I was hoping to have more public here and what we did was we scheduled, scheduled another committee meeting for April 3rd at 7:00 PM to pursue it further. The issue further, one of the issues raised, the strongest one was, why do we need it? I know there are a lot of answers to that, but I'd like to have people from the community come and help answer that question. Part of the problem tonight too, was that there was an IDA meeting scheduled at 7 o'clock and not usually scheduled against council meetings, that this was a special occasion with the accelerator. So we understand it, but we hope it doesn't happen too often. And remind people that the famous blizzard, blizzard of 1888 was March 11th, so these March snowstorms are not unusual and stay safe tomorrow. Thank you.
Alden Kassoon.
Good evening. First off, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Neighborhood Watch meetings for 2018 will reconvene next week, Tuesday, the 13th at 7:00 PM here in this room. I also wanted to be the first to let people know because I just got a notification from the school district that there is a snow day tomorrow, so yay. On that vein, I just wanted to also let people know who have children in elementary school who might not otherwise have heard through the social media streams, that they have half days scheduled for parent teacher conferences this week. They have changed that schedule, so please go to the district website if you have an elementary school student and it'll tell you the changes that have been made in the event of snow days, which we now have, and, and things of that sort. So please check that out. Tonight, we have two resolutions on for water drainage improvements for the West Main and Maple Park area and all I can say is, can I get a hallelujah? In all seriousness, we appreciate everyone's support on the council for these things. The people who live there really are going to benefit very much from this, so we thank you and really excited to see this moving forward. And quickly, I'd like to take a moment, if I could, to highlight a few Middletown athletes who will be making us proud this weekend. The YMCA of Middletown Barracuda Swim Team has four athletes headed off to Metropolitan Swimming Junior Olympics this weekend out on Long Island. And as a proud mother, I can just say that my daughter Mia happens to be one of them and she's qualified in four events and I'm really super proud. We've got a great group of kids on this team. They've all worked really hard. A number of them made Junior Olympics and we have four of them headed out and they make our town proud, so I just wanted to highlight them this evening and as a mama, yay Mia, good luck. Have a good snow day tomorrow and be safe. Thank you.
Alden Johnson.
Thank you. Legislative met this evening at 7 o'clock. We tabled a zone change. We've decided to update some language with respect to snow removal penalty policy. We've updated the taxi inspection schedule, so those people will be more clear what's expected of them. We talked about the possibility of having a zone change to facilitate student housing for full-time college students and/or graduate students. We are considering a program for background checks for rental. We did not discuss that this evening. And we continued our dialogue on clearboarding, which is a policy where abandoned properties would be required to replace plywood with polyvinyl plastic, which would be aesthetically pleasing and probably a better security issue. It's a multifaceted conversation and it's ongoing. I attended the school meeting last week and everything they said about it was true. With respect to the accelerator, I think it's a great program. Particularly impressed with the collaboration with the IDA and having a grant writer can always be a good thing, so I think it's going to be good for those folks. Some people heard of Race to the Top. That's where the district brought lots of money in for the school system. Most people heard of DRI, which is downtown revitalization, where the city brought millions of dollars into this, into this community. And I was happy to, to note that the main society, I mentioned this grant application a few weeks ago, and that the Middletown Humane Society is one of 14 throughout the state to, to achieve the award of that grant and they've been awarded $439,000. I saw some of the initial architects drawings and wrote a letter of support for this. The long-range plan would be to actually potentially double the size of the current shelter and may the force be with all of them as well. And I certainly agree with Alden, Alden Ramkassoon. We've had enough of world, Water World, we'd like to move forward. Thank you very much.
Alden Green.
Nothing this evening.
Alden Tobin.
Also excited about the accelerator project and they're, they're helping to attract businesses to the Horton campus, the fourth ward in the city of Middletown. I'm looking forward to attending the Narcan training on Thursday. It's been, it's being put on by the Middletown Cares. I hope it's informative. I know there's going to be other substance abuse information there as well. It's not just going to be about Narcan. As a teacher, you know, I participate in drills, the shelter in place or you lock yourself in your room and it's kind of scary because we practice, we practice like it's a real thing. They don't say, "This is a drill. It's lockdown and you got to lock yourself down." And it's a shame when our children become targets. I know with the swatting and now these shootings. And so I was up in Albany for, as a teacher today for Education Lobby Day, Lobby Day, and we talked about the SROs and trying to get funding and, and including it in the budget and continued funding for SROs. I want to make sure that the state does fund it, that they continue to fund it. It's not like a one-year thing, otherwise it becomes what we call unfunded mandate. The state likes to tell you how to spend your money, but they also need to include paying for it as well. And I think anytime we, you know, we want to secure our most precious possessions, which are our children. You think about it, they have armed guards at jewelry stores. Maybe we need to have, harden up our security at our schools. And again, it's a shame when our children become targets. I'm glad to hear about the school district getting involved with the march. I think anytime we can encourage civic participation with our students is great. It shouldn't just be, I know they're talking about a walkout. It shouldn't just be a walkout to walk out. There should be some purpose to it. We call that in social studies, taking informed action, so I think that's a great idea. This is a teachable moment, moment for the students and anytime we can encourage them to be more civically active, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Alden Massey.
First, I'd like to apologize for my interaction with that young gentleman, but he comes to these meetings, he makes accusations, usually about the mayor and about myself, and, and I have no problems and I'm sure the mayor has no problems with defending himself either, except that he, he blatantly tells you lies and the, the proof is actually in the pudding. All it was, was the Board of Elections went over all his signatures and found that 90% of his signatures were not valid signatures. That's the reason he was not on the ballot. His own doing, no one else is doing. Two, the Little League, thank you very much for coming. Little League's always been near and dear to me. My father was one of the five originating people who put the Little League together back in 1950 and of course, through the years, I played in it. And unfortunately, today I went to a wake for Mr. Bill Brockett, who for years and years and years was an umpire in Little League and I'm happy that we're on board and I'm happy that the club that I am the immediate past president of, the Kiwanis, jumped on board too and we're grateful to you. And the, the last thing I have, my hat as administrator of the civil service, when I say this, please, anyone that's out there that's listening, listen carefully. We are giving the police officer exam on Saturday, September 15th. Please do not call the police department or civil service or city hall yet. The state dictates when we can put out the announcement. I promise you, the first day that the announcements are allowed, they will be out. John will put them on our website. I know the chief and I have talked, we're going to do an outreach to a number of organizations and groups to try to get people. But I did at least want to let you know, normally the test is given in December, or excuse me, November. They decided to change it. It is September 15th, but you can't sign up for it yet. You will be able to once it's online. So anyone that you know that's under the age of 35, unless they have military time and wants to become a police officer, please have them look at our website. Probably end of April, the state will allow us to put it out. Thank you very much.
New business.
Tonight, we have a resolution sponsored by Alden Massey to approve the city to enter into an annual agreement with the Pension Benefit Information LLC for an annual cost of $1,000.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, seconded by Alden Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Green to authorize the mayor as a sole authorized signatory to sign all necessary documents for submission pertaining to the Danzy Grant for the Paramount Theater.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Green, seconded by Alden Tobin. Any discussion? Alden Kleiner.
I think this is the one that I want to mention that we, it's a, it's this $100,000 grant from Senator Bonisak, so I think we should note that. Thank you.
Fully noted. Anyone else? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey to authorize the mayor to sign a contract with JCO for the operation of the wastewater treatment system.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, seconded by Alden Jean-François. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Burr to authorize the closing of streets for the Little League Parade on Sunday, April 7th at 10:00 AM.
Saturday.
Oh, I'm sorry, Saturday.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Burr, seconded by Alden Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson to accept the bid for the drainage improvements for West Main Area Project.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson, seconded by Alden Kassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson to accept the bid for the drainage improvements for the Maple Avenue Area Project.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Johnson, seconded by Alden Kassoon. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden John Francois to approve the 2018 Annual Spring Cleanup Week.
Resolution sponsored by Alden John Francois, seconded by Alden Burr. Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey to authorize a treasurer to transfer a total of $916,213.20 as per the attached spreadsheet, spreadsheet within the 2017 budget to cover year-end overages.
Resolution sponsored by Alden Massey, seconded by Alden Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alden John Francois to approve an increase in the days to pick up recycling to cover the 13 holidays in the city.
Resolution sponsored by Alden John Francois, seconded by Alden Kleiner. Any discussion? Alden Massey.
Go, go on.
Go.
Go on, Duke. That's all right. Yes, I want to, I want to thank the mayor for actually approving that and the commissioner and coming council president. The mayor is actually holding me responsible for this because we actually have spent a lot of money to get this going and, and I'd like for everybody to support me on this. Please, remind your neighbor to recycle and, and your family. I mean, this, this is very important and recycling is very important to the city of Middletown and we losing a lot of money and we try to encourage people to recycle and this, this, this is great because it's, it's very frustrating. Usually after the holiday, we don't pick up till a week after. So this is going to help us to do that, be able to put your recycling out and to be picked up the next day after the holiday.
I mean, this, this is very important. And recycling is very important to the city of Middletown, and we losing a lot of money. And we trying to encourage people to recycle. And this, this, this is great, because it's, it's very frustrating. Usually after the holiday, we don't pick up till a week after. So this is going to help us to do that, be able to put your recycling out and to be picked up the next day after the holiday. So this is, this is great. Thank you.
Aldman Massey.
First, I want to start out and tell you, I'm absolutely in favor of this. I'm one of three members of the Board of Estimate, and we discussed this, and it doesn't get here unless it goes through us. And we all voted for it. There's a price tag, when we were discussing it, we thought, in the neighborhood of about That part upsets me only from this standpoint. Because of the leadership of the CSEA Union, that's the reason we have to do this. If they would have allowed the contract to come to a vote, like the mayor has mentioned on numerous occasions, we would not have this extra added expense. That was part of the other deal. But their insistence of not bringing it to a vote has caused us, and Jude's 100% right, it's, we need this. What happens when you go one, two, and sometimes three weeks without pickup? People throw the recyclables away. We're hoping, and the mayor gave the, I guess, the 6%, we're hoping that with this, we will increase that. But I want you to know, this $30,000 did not have to be spent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Aldman Kleiner.
This is maybe the most frequent thing brought up at constituent meetings, and for people who have trouble and, and people who have trouble carrying it out on a weekly basis, who want to do the right thing, when it goes two weeks and then a third week. So we've been asking for this for a long time, so thank you, Jude, and thank you, everyone.
Anyone else? Roll.
Ram Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Motion by Aldman Kleiner, seconded by Aldman Massey. Any discussion?
Ram Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be ordered and the claims to be adjusted, and the city treasurer to be authorized to issue warrants for their payment. Motion by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Roll.
Ram Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Mr. President, I move the accounts to be ordered and the claims to be adjusted, and the city treasurer to be authorized to issue warrants for their payment. Motion by Aldman Massey, seconded by Aldman Johnson. Roll.
Ram Casoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Aldman Johnson.
I'd like to make a motion for executive session to discuss a contractual matter.
Motion by Aldman Johnson to go into executive session, seconded by Aldman John Francois. All in favor?
Aye.
Go into executive session.